This conference will now be recorded.
It spelled out the amount.
Ready? All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It is December the first, 2020. It is four oh six. We'll call the special meeting to order and ask Ms. Hit. Roll call, please.
Chairman.
Here.
Vice Chair Breyer.
Here.
Captain McDowell.
Here.
Mr. Cornikay.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Rapowski here. And we also have joining with us Woody Andrews and Noel Thomas. Mr. Rashar and Mr. Nguyen could not make it. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Hit. The purpose for the meeting, we have two items on the agenda, and as our bylaws state, that all business related to a special meeting has to be only the items that are listed on our agenda. So with that out of the way, the first item is NASA artifacts relocation. We're going to look at the subtitles below that, and I'm going to turn this back over to Ms. Hit for her input. She's been handling the majority of this along with Woody Andrews and Noel Thomas, our NASA group, and trying to get a lot of this resolved. So Ms. Hit, where do we want to go from here?
Well, I've listed just a couple of items just for the sake of following with conversation. We obviously were connected, as I mentioned in past meetings, with Mr. Dennis Jenkins. He kind of fell into our lap through the Moonfall agreement that the Air Force Authority decided to connect with for the space simulator, and then there were some other miscellaneous items that were shipped up for the Moonfall production company. And when he, Mr. Jenkins, came to assist with putting those items on the Flat Edge to ship up, we really started to kind of connect with him. He had an extensive history and knowledge of many of the items, if not all the items, that Wings of Dreams acquired over the years. Mr. Ol had reached out to Mr. Jenkins approximately, probably two years ago. I think really when the authority started to work with Mr. Ol or with Wings of Dreams in starting to remove those items off of airport property. At that time, Mr. Jenkins had found a home for, my understanding, most everything that was here that needed to leave. At that time, for Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Ol essentially refused his offer to relocate those items, and then Mr. Jenkins had a way. So how Mr. Jenkins and Moonfall connected, I don't know, but he ended up here, and we kind of reconnected again, and I shared with him what the situation that the Air Force Authority is in now since Wings of Dreams or Mr. Ol signed over the remaining pieces to us. So he really committed to helping us find a location for as many of these items as he could. And as it seems to be the excuse for everything that is going off kilter of late is COVID has really impacted a lot of the museums and either having good funding available to not necessarily purchase the items, but really just covering the transportation cost in getting them to these locations, and then of course just the funding that they don't have to maintain or to house these items. So it really has put us in a worse situation than what we were hoping for a couple of years ago. So just, really, you all had asked for me to pull together a couple of individuals who had some history with Wings of Dreams and these items and acquiring these items. And I was able to, thankfully, Woody, as well as Noel, and also my pot of how I guess, my pot of how I was going to turn it here today, but yes, and all three have had extensive experience with Mr. Ol and with Wings of Dreams. And so especially with Noel, that he knew and as well as Mr. Kirkland and several others were part of the team who went to these destinations, Houston and Fort Penaveral, and were part of actually bringing these items back. And of course, Woody, you've been part of, you're part of doing the tours of the museum and really got to know, know a level at the back of your hand, these items as well. So we've been able, it hasn't been as smooth as what we were hoping because to gain access to some of these items, we've really had to take a full inventory. Well, we couldn't take a hundred percent full inventory until we were able to kind of identify what these were compared to the inventory of the list that was taken when Wings of Dreams acquired it. So Noel's been able to provide us with that, but to find them and check them off the list has been a little bit taxing because some of that stuff has either left the property, and we don't know where they are. They could be in possession of Mr. Ol in any location. We, there's three Connexes plus an old tractor trailer that's down on this six-acre parcel that are jam-packed full of stuff. So you can't really go in and do a clear inventory until we can pull those items out and then put them into a wide-open space and separate them and really identify what they are. Thankfully, we got some volunteer time from Bryn over at the firm a few weeks ago. He and I and Luke went down and drug, literally drugged some of these pieces out of there and threw away trash and separated some and moved them down into a hangar. We still need to empty out two other Connexes as well as the trailer. It takes manpower. It takes equipment, and we are, it's difficult, to say the least, to be able to get this done. But on the other hand, with that time against us and funding, we also have these museums, which I've attached, they'll see request letters. We've got museums and Mr. Jenkins who are very, very eager to hear from the board in terms of can we have these pieces? And it really does come back to the board. It really isn't a decision that the committee can make or that, you know, myself can make because there's been lots of, a variety of talks and discussion about how you want these items to leave. Do you want, if we find a good home and they pay for the transportation costs to get them there, is that the way that we want to go? We've heard discussions that you would like to assess a value on some of these. I don't know how we assess the value. Mr. Jenkins doesn't either. And do you want to charge these museums? I'm sure we're all going to have some sort of opinion, but it all comes down to it if we don't jump on the opportunity to get these off of property and two homes that can take care of them properly, we may miss our opportunity. So it really felt that it was important for us to be able to pull together a meeting and have some of these discussions. Pima, you'll see, is one of the museums down in Arizona who's very interested in the parts, pieces and parts, which they've listed in the request letter. They, this piece, the Lear, is not one of the pieces that we're responsible for. It is on our property, but that is a GSA item, and they are working through GSA to finish that paperwork, and they'll come and take that back to Arizona. You don't have to worry about that. I didn't have that listed. But one of the, one of the items that they are listed have, are interested in is the simulator. And of course, we know it's in Montreal right now. Certainly, I think the cleanest way to get it to them would just have Moonfall ship it directly to Pima and not come back here, and then we've got to worry about getting it out there. So that would be one decision so that Moonfall knows within the next month where they're shipping it and how they're shipping it. The other piece that I wanted to be able to talk about too is the astronaut transporter. I don't know, it's sitting peacefully right now over at the firm. We didn't move it over there. Mr. Ol or Mr. Ashley moved it over there. It really wasn't approved by the firm for it to be there, but it's there now. And now there's hydraulic issues going on. Pima wasn't interested in it, but they found out through the Department of Transportation that there's no way that they can get it approved for it to be shipped over to Arizona because of its size. Woody, I think, and you probably explained that, I think you had a couple of people interested locally, but...
Right. I had several people that said that they were interested. They came out and looked at it. Once they saw how large it was, it realized that the cost of transportation was just beyond their means at the time. So that's why it's still sitting over there.
Right. The firm has expressed great interest in acquiring it for a variety of uses. Mr. Jenkins has stated beyond Pima being interested in it, which we know they can't have it now. He said it really has no value. It was an airport people's transportation bus out of, or was that Noel? I can't think. It was Atlanta, but I think it was like Oklahoma City.
Oklahoma City, yeah, I think so.
Yeah. So it really has no value. Like I said, it needs hydraulic work on it, and that's all that we know of only because the hydraulic fluids have leaked everywhere. Do we want, that's a discussion on what we all want to be able to do with it too. So there's, there's lots of pieces and parts. There's going to be stuff that if you want to come out and look at some of it, what are those with the keyboards and the monitors? What are those, if you could recall?
Yeah, the...
That's the MFDs, multi-function displays.
No, that's the instrument.
That's navigation instruments for the simulator.
Oh.
And Pima's not interested in those at all. We've had a couple of schools who have said, wow, we'd like to take one.
So that's the only thing they hope.
Yeah, not. So there's going to be pieces and parts like that that I'm not sure what we want to do with it or if you want to just leave it up to the committee to find homes for these and do, do you all want to put a value on it? Just time is of essence, and otherwise, we're going to find ourselves if we can find takers.
Well, why don't we go back and look at dress, then, this item A, the interested parties? So we have a letter from California Science Center Foundation, and they had listed their seven items that they are interested in. What I find interesting in their letter, in the fourth paragraph, they did mention as part of its competitive bid, and that was when they were obtaining the actual shuttle, the Endeavour. So I would assume they paid some money in order to obtain what they have. I noticed that, and I guess that's listed on the very back page, looks like a spreadsheet with the California Space or Science Center, Pima, Valiant Air Command, and then other. There are a couple of items that both groups want. So do we want to honor or grant the request from the California Science Center for those seven items? Again, item five, the reinforced carbon wing panel. That's also been requested by Pima. And then it looks like California Science Center also wants the non-multi-function displays, and the Valiant Air Command also requested those if we were giving them away, so.
Valiant Air Command is really a letter from Dennis Jenkins, and if he wants that.
Yes.
And he had said that he was, of course, he wants as many pieces that he can get, but he had mentioned too that if there's some other locations like California Science Center or some of these others, that he certainly would want within them, you know.
Mr. Cornikay, if you want to relocate something, I know I'm moving, I'm moving because the sun is so bad, I can't even see Woody down on that end.
I'll fight through it. I'll be okay.
I kind of like the idea of keeping it with the Valiant Air Command here in Florida because they're right down the road from Kennedy. Plus, the likelihood with them being geographically closer, I think, kind of makes it more likely they would follow through. I mean, they don't have that far to transport it. And then if they want to give some of that stuff to California Science or the things that are on the list that California Science wanted, that they don't have, that'd be my propensity to go that way.
There's a number of items that are up at Menfoul, is that right?
Right.
And it appears that they've agreed or would ask that, California Science has asked that they'd be allowed to ship directly from where they are in New York to wherever they're going in California. That sounds appealing because that means administratively, we don't have to do anything.
Well, and it could work that way with Valiant too, either one of them.
I think Valiant, they were going to come get those items. Most of everything they've requested are small items. Correct me, Woody and Noel, if I'm misstating, that, I know the model of the VAB, it's a little bulky, but nothing that can go in an enclosed trailer. So the six items that they're requesting, I guess the only, I guess the largest item would be item six, that RCC panel? Is that the crate that's down in the field?
That's in the hangar up there. It's in a, what is it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I do remember now. Yeah. That's the leading edge.
Yes.
Thing, yeah. I'm thinking of the elevon that's down in the crate. Okay.
Once you mentioned the elevon and the landing gear door that's down there that we attempted to move to the hangar, does that ever get moved? There was an issue where on the elevon shipping crate, I think it was pretty much destroyed at the bottom. And can't verify it because we can't open it up to look inside to see if there was any damage at all. But I know for certain that the bottom of the crate is gone.
So a wood crate?
No, it's a metal shipment.
Oh, okay. So we don't know what kind of frame is underneath or part of that crate.
Yeah, you need probably some impact wrenches to get the holes off so you can look inside. We, they didn't have a long enough fork on the forklift to transport it up. I think when they attempted to move it, it punctured the bottom.
All right. Well, let's listen, let's look at the Valiant Air Command request. For the six items that they're requesting, and that's something, and they will, they will come and get these and take them down to their museum in Tidusville.
What was the other part that you mentioned? Did you call it Pima?
Yeah, museum and...
You don't have a letter from them?
I don't. I think on the back letter, there are something on the back.
It looks like a spreadsheet someone put together. Scott, they chose.
Right, the very back page.
A column for Pima and the items.
Oh, I see.
That was kind of a summary that Dennis put together.
Right.
So not all of these items are overlapping then?
Correct.
Correct. The only ones that are overlapping, I believe, are the ones that I've mentioned. Well, let's see.
Several.
Well, we didn't talk about the control, what is that, control, checkout control and monitor subsystem, firing room consoles from Kennedy Space Center. Those are the ones that are in the hangar, Woody?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, before we get into that, Scott, if we could, let's go back to the Valiant Air Command. Do we want to approve this request for those items to go to Valiant Air Command?
I would just say so. I think it would be neat. And it's not just because they're in Florida, but like I say, they're right down the road from Kennedy. And if Kennedy hasn't maintained many of these artifacts from the shuttle, obviously, they have some there, but I think it'd be nice for people that are coming to tour. I think they would go to Kennedy, and if they know about Valiant Air Command, they would probably draw more people. I mean, these are taxpayer-paid-for assets, and the more of the American people that can see them, I think the better.
Does our committee have any issues with this particular request from Valiant Air Command? All right. Any issues with moving any of this? Or is this readily available to where if they arrange with Maria to come up and... to come up and have them loaded onto whatever they're going to take them out of here on?
As I stated earlier, the first attempt would try to move the elevon crate. I think it damaged it somewhat, so if they are going to come up, someone will have to obtain a forklift, a longer fork on it, to be able to get completely under that thing to lift it up.
But that's not on their list, the Valiant Air Command. It's not on their letter.
Unless the main landing gear door is on their list.
Okay. So where is it located?
Adjacent, it's in the field.
Okay, all right. All right, so what's the pleasure of the board? We need a motion to, if we want to approve this transfer to Valiant Air Command, these particular items. We need a motion and vote on that.
I move to approve the Valiant Air Command request, the transfer as written.
All right, we have a motion to.
Before we.
Okay.
Do you have a motion?
Let me, do I hear a second to the motion?
One second.
All right, now, discussion.
Well, on the spreadsheet, there are some overlapping pieces that are wanted. I'm wondering if we could better serve this by saying, perhaps in a given order, that we give the first right of refusal to, and I'm just going to say Valiant Air Command first, and then maybe Pima second, and then California Science Center. I think it might be easier, and I can't imagine any of these groups, if they're wanting to do the right thing, turning down anything that may be left over. I think it might be an easier way to do it in one motion, maybe I'm wrong?
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we just discussed about these items being on both California Science and Valiant Air Command. I would take it that if we're making a motion to transfer ownership of those items that they've listed to Valiant Air Command, then that's priority.
That was my intent.
Right.
Regardless of, on the spreadsheet here, that there is, I mean, it lists both of them.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, you might be able to cover it in one motion by giving it a first, second, and third place. In other words, Valiant Air Command could take anything off that list they've already got checked. Then whatever's left, then California Science Center could get it, and then third, Pima, or it doesn't even have to go in that order. If you're going to do a motion for each one, then we're going to have to deduct those items, I think, that California Science Center wanted. Would I not be correct in that?
Yes, those two items, the nine MFDs and the RCC panel, are also listed on the California Science Center's request.
Right.
I think when we get to that particular motion, I think most would have to say less item five and item seven.
Okay.
First come, first served, whoever shows up first, there it is.
Well, and I was going to be, my point is that it could be, you know, along the way, is that we've, one of the other things that I was going to mention too, is that we've talked to Jim Taylor as well, because we thought, okay, well, we've got to come up with some type of transfer paperwork that shows, you know, Mr. Old signed over everything to the airport, well, now we need to basically come up with the same type of paperwork that shows, okay, these items listed now, the airport is now signing over to this location. If it's somewhere between now and the next time that I talk with Mr. Jenkins, so this may change. So I'm wondering if we should make it a little more fluid, emotional.
Well, that's why I'm suggesting that if we do it, Valiant Air Command gets first choice, and once they make their choice, that's it. And then it goes to California or Pima, and then the last one. It's just, or do you think it is better to have it where, I mean, you've got to have one that is going to be the dominant, I feel like. And then you're going to have a secondary for whatever doesn't fall through, because they get up here, change their mind, oh, that's a larger piece than we thought, we're not going to be able to take it. It affords you the opportunity to move it down the line to the next group, just a suggestion.
It seems like we're getting in the weeds. At first come, first served, if you ask me, you tell everybody it's available, whoever shows up first, you take it? I'm with it.
How would that, how would that work for the pieces that are in New York?
Montreal.
Montreal, yeah. Yeah, you've got two people competing.
Whoever handles the shipment first with Montreal gets it. That way, we're not playing favorites.
Well, the only people that want the show that's in Montreal, or any of those pieces, is the California Science Group. Or did Pima want some of that too?
I saw it somewhere, I think you're right, but I saw the forward and aft sections somewhere on the list. I don't know where I read that. Yeah, right here on the Excel spreadsheet, or whatever this is, it says GNS forward flight deck. It's about almost two-thirds the way down, and then GNS aft flight deck. So both of them want that. Both of them want the, what are the MSCs?
That's the seats, that's the mission.
Mission specialist, okay.
Yeah.
Well, we can have three or four strong.
So is there, have somebody pull, okay, Pima gets that one. Is there any downside to the first come, first served idea?
I think you lose some organization.
Yeah, I think it could be too, what if somebody says, oh, we've got all the time in the world, or whatever, you know, we'll get whatever's left. I mean, I think you still need to define it, but that's why I say if you give one group, you say, okay. And with Valiant Air Command, they've already made a specific list. If there's anything else they want out of there, they can get that too. Whatever they don't get, then your next group gets a stab at it. But it's got to be, there's got to be some, I don't think you can wait for first come, first served.
All right, well, the overlapping items are just with California and Pima, right? As California and Valiant has one, California and Valiant, but there's no more than two entities that want something, right?
That should have a common sheet.
I don't have a quarter on me, but flip a coin.
And I feel pretty confident that Dennis can manage a lot of this, and that's, I'm wondering.
Well, I guess the thing, since we didn't get anything official from Pima as far as a letter, I mean, we do have a letter of request with specific items from CSC and Valiant Air Command. I mean, we've got specific things that they've requested. I think it would simplify, simplify it for our staff if the board approved those items.
I'm getting weird.
And then as far as California Science, we approved those items, less items five and seven, because we selected, we decided to let Valiant Air Command have those. So I think it's going to make it easier too, because remember, guys, we've got to take this back to Jim Taylor, because I don't think it can be just one broad-brush document. We've got to come up with some individual, well, basically like we have here, some description that's going to go on that legal document, because both of them in their verbiage, they use the same verbiage. You know, they want a free and unencumbered title, so I think.
I think you're right. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay, so you've already got a motion for the Valiant Air Command. I call for the question.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Legally, if you look at it, CSC submitted their request first over Valiant Air Command.
True, but is that a legal thing?
It's not legal.
I don't think it's a legal thing.
Yeah, I don't know that it's a legal thing.
Request for information.
Might be a courtesy thing. It's not like we're having a bid. If we have bids, open bids on something, I might get one.
You didn't come get it first.
Okay, now let's address California Science, their request.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the allocation of items on the California Science list minus the nine MFD units and the RCC panel, is that correct?
Correct. That would be item five and item seven.
Okay, item number five and item number seven.
All right, we have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carry. All right, now, what about future items, or items, future for items not requested? Let's talk about the transporter. Do we want to donate that to the firm?
Well, let me ask you before we go further now, on this, according to this list, Pima has got items that are uncontested. Do we want to make a motion for those items? I mean, we don't have a letter, but I'm looking at this spreadsheet. You've got the orbiter outer elevon, the payload bay test article.
Mr. Fry, here's one of, one things I think we need. We need an official letter from Pima.
Okay.
Again, because we need their.
You need official documentation.
We need their legal information so that when we do the transfer, that Jim will have something other than just Pima.
Okay.
Obviously, that's an acronym for something.
I'll contact Dennis, also, first thing in the morning, and see if he can get that, and if he can get that out to all of you, or.
But I agree with you, Mr. Fry. If Pima has just individual items and there's no conflict with any of the others, then we want to just.
Well, and now you'll be able to tell them exactly what to put on their letter too, because there's only, it looks like, two items left available to them. They can't get the Learjet, right? They have to go through a.
That's GSA.
GSA for that.
Yeah, I sort of say.
So that's only going to leave them with the payload bay test article and the elevon, outer orbiter. And you, and that's the item you're talking about that's damaged?
Yes.
So is that made out of sheet metal?
I'm not sure.
I mean, I guess it's something they can repair, possibly, or?
Depends on the damage, but I would say, but without looking at it, without getting into it and determining what. It just may not be good once you get in there.
It's a fairly large steel shipping crate.
Okay.
It's bowled in pretty good to get that top off. It takes several minutes to get it.
As long as they're aware, they may be shipping for something that ends up being scrap metal. And then they could do the letter based on those items.
I'll request a letter, and then is there a way that we can make the motion so that we don't have to wait another month or so? Or?
Contingent. Contingent upon receiving.
Now, if you get the.
Yeah. I think that's still.
So you want a motion?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion contingent upon Pima's proof that they're a 501(c)(3) organization, and they meet the credentials that we award them the pieces that they've asked for. Does that sound fair?
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions or discussion?
The pieces they've asked for that are uncontested from the list.
Even better.
Okay.
Add that to my motion, that are uncontested, right.
Items requested and uncontested, sounds good. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Let's talk about the transporter. It's a pleasure of the board there, given the information that Miss Hitt provided to us with the interest that the firm has.
Make a pretty neat fixed side boot truck.
Yeah, have to build some nice decks up to it though, to the windows. Yeah, that wouldn't be a problem, I don't think.
What do they plan, does anybody know what they plan to do with it?
I don't.
Not that it really matters.
Bryn has, there hasn't been any official, formal, written request made. Bryn has mentioned classrooms, he's mentioned whatever. I don't know, makes me a little nervous just because there hasn't been a formal request made for sure, which I don't know if the owner of the firm would end up coming back and saying, I don't want that on our property, get it out of here. So at that point, then, you know, what do we do with it?
You know, what would be, I mean, they could elevate it up and leave it in.
The position we have right now.
I don't know if you can pin that thing in an elevated position, but it goes up, what, two and a half stories or? It'd be a neat observation deck if they can clean up those windows, but the windows are pretty bad.
But it's just going to take money for somebody at some point to do something with it, and that's, that's the problem with getting all of this stuff moved.
Right.
Does it run at all?
It does start.
It starts, but then it won't be.
It's probably.
Move it, but as soon as you try to move it, gallons of hydraulic fluid start flowing.
It probably just, there's, I think that they're hydraulic drives, aren't they? It's probably just hoses that have gone bad.
Totally that are bad.
The top speed on that thing's what, like seven miles an hour or something like that?
It's not much.
Yeah, if that.
I thought they said at one time that they had increased the speed up to about 45 miles an hour.
And we don't want to drive it.
No.
How about, what, how about we do this, how about we have Miss Hitt contact the firm, ask if they have serious interest, if they do, send us a letter requesting that, and then we'll arrange for transfer. How about that?
That sounds good.
We'll discuss it.
What about the fuel tank cradle down there? Has anybody expressed interest in it?
When Dennis was here, helping us with getting the simulator loaded up for Montreal, apparently, there are a lot of those cradles that were manufactured. So again, there's not a big demand for them.
And it wouldn't be anything, it's really historic. I mean, there is still one, I guess, over Green Cove with the actual external, I think I saw it sitting on. So could we get, on something like that, possibly get some scrap metal companies bid? To come out, and yeah, Black Friday's over. You know, I mean, there are people, I think, that would come out and bid to cut that thing up and haul it off and give us, give us some money, or even if, even if it was a break-even thing, if.
Okay.
To expend their efforts to get it cut up, and they can have the proceeds of the scrap metal value.
Along those lines, on the Hubble simulator, there are only certain pieces of that. Who wants that? Pima? Is Pima that wants that, or?
They want two Hubble pieces.
CSC.
Actually, CSC, was it, was that on there?
I think you ought to take, if they're taking a portion of something, they ought to take all of it. That's just my opinion.
Well, and that's the, that's the problem too with the shuttle simulator, the pieces that Moonfall had.
It's not listed on their request.
They just, the pieces that they needed for the movie, they don't have the structural pieces. In fact, those are some of the pieces that we moved down from the.
Is that where the cargo bay is, or something like?
Yeah, they're not interested in all the erector set stuff that takes it up to three stories. So that would be.
More scrap.
Because that we could, if we needed to.
To scrap out, okay.
It's, the Hubble items are not listed in their letter, so I don't, how does, who developed this, the spreadsheet?
That was Dennis Jenkins.
Okay, Dennis put that together?
So we can clearly.
Okay.
Get a better understanding of.
Yeah, and both of them are only interested in the cylindrical telescope sections, not the parallel rings. So there's going to be more, I'll call it scrap, if you will, because like the cradle, that's one of the artifact. And then what's outside these rings, that's going to be items. As Bria mentioned, all of the steel framing for. As Bria mentioned, all of the steel framing for the simulator, that's there. Noel and Woody, what about the items in the trailer? There are some computer cabinets, I believe, in there.
I believe in the trailer is where the display units are.
Correct.
Bowled to the simulator. And the, we haven't been able to really get in that trailer, but I believe it's all, that the computers are in there also.
It's all the computer systems that they use for the training mission and had the graphics. Computer in there did the graphics for them, so when you're taken off, it looks like it's taken off. You know, like, that's all the computer simulators that they use to make the different scenarios to teach them to come back and then track how they blew it and what they did with it.
I don't believe that they're interested in any of that stuff. And they're not interested in, what are the two pieces out to the left of the cradle, too large?
Oh, the SRV ab skirt.
Ab skirt.
And the front skirt.
And they're on trailers with wheels, but nobody's interested in those. And those aren't like little pieces that we can just scrap. And when I say public sale, or future for, you know, items that nobody's requesting, I don't know-
When you get into those computers, or, I mean, the hard drives are still in there, is any of that stuff proprietary, or? I know it's not top secret, but-
No, it's all, it's all off the shelf, stuff that they bought and put together and wired it. But when they took it apart, it was all wired with ribbon cables. And they just-
Well, I guess what I'm asking-
Put it back together to where it would function as-
Can we, can we call a computer scrapper and we're not going to be violating any laws or anything? That, any programs they've got on those hard drives?
No, they wiped everything clean, as far as I know.
Okay, because there are companies that'll come in and take all the, for the precious metals, or they used to. I don't know if they still do, for the computer components.
I know, I know the one system there that they had, the original graphics system, they paid over a million dollars for it when they purchased it back in early sixties.
What do we do this?
Do we have to, say we want to scrap it, we get a hold of a scrap yard company and they send a representative out here? Out here and they go, "Okay, we'll pay the airport X value for this." We're not paying for anything, we're getting money, so we shouldn't have to go out for bid on that, am I correct?
The only thing you would do, and I'll give you a, for instance, from where my background, is if we had a massive amount of metal we were going to be removing, we would bring in three or four, it was to our benefit, and they would come in and take a look, more from a logistics standpoint, you know, where they could spot their trailers or roll offs and everything. And then they would tell us what they were going to give us per pound, because steel prices change every day. But they guarantee us a price per pound.
So, after, after California, Pima, and Valium picks up their stuff, why don't we look and do what you're talking about with the rest of it? Somebody, and maybe somebody's going to come in and grab it. I mean, there's some heavy, there's some good steel, I know for sure out there, probably some aluminum and probably some other stuff.
Well, and the-
And then we have the old beacon light tower that could go with it.
If we could load it ourselves, we would make all that money. The problem is, a lot of that's going to have to be manually cut up, and some of those-
And we're going to need torches and all kinds of stuff that gets time.
Some of them were the torches. I think that those big cradles, they have these big gouging rods.
We would end up hiring, we would end up having to hire people to do it, so-
Right, that's what I'm saying, if you can find a scrapper that'll do that, you might be lucky just to get them to provide the labor and the disposal until it breaks even wash. That's what I don't know.
Is there anything in between, once that outside source have taken what they need to take? And right before we called scrappers, is there anything in the middle that you all feel would be beneficial in terms of opening it up to, I'm just going to use the word auction, or whatever, of any other interested parties who may come in and they find a value on it, before we move to the last alternative of scrapping?
Thought about that, but how much does an auctioneer cost? We might go in the hole.
Well, the buyer can charge a percentage.
He doesn't have a flat fee, and then a percentage?
Seller premium.
Charge is a certain percentage of the amount sold, plus he has a charge on top of the buyer.
If there's anything of value down there that might be worth it, yeah.
Not that we want to see some of these large pieces in the back of Bubba's backyard, throwing, throwing a big beer cager in Keystone. I don't want to see that, but at the same time, could there potentially be?
If there are small items down there, that'd be good. But here's a scenario, what if Bubba does get the bid on the big cradle? And he says, "Well, I'll cut that up and haul it out of here, I'll give you five hundred dollars for it." And then, he doesn't follow through. He's not a corporation, you don't have a legal binding contract with him. I mean, are we going to go sue this little guy for? That's the only thing I'm thinking of. Now, if there are smaller articles that can be loaded and hauled away, sure.
Legally in the state of Florida, if he makes a bid and it's accepted, it's a legally binding contract.
Okay. So again, though, are we willing to take him to court, though, to get him to haul something out that is a hundred and seventy-six feet long?
Yeah, there we go in the hole.
You know, we-
Let's, why don't we do this? Let's, since we've moved forward with the two requests, we'll get with Pima on the items that they have said they want, with their official requests, and get with the firm on the transporter. We need a deadline, do we want to set a deadline for all of this to be done as well? Here's what I'm getting at, be honest.
You're shooting yourselves in the foot, I mean, you know.
Well, a reasonable deadline is, I think it's a good idea, otherwise, because if you just say, "Well, here, it's yours", then they could be dragging on for years, you know. And before we go any further with that, I don't know that we want to make somebody take, for instance, all of the Hubble telescope hardware. But I think the fact that they're getting it for free, we're not getting any monetary, we should heavily suggest, push that, okay, you're, we're doing you a favor by awarding you this. You need to take all of the components that go with that. We really would like you to do that. Now, if they don't do it, then it goes to scrap. But, you know.
What, where I was going with that is, once we have all these entities that want items, and we've confirmed they want the items, then whatever is left, can we have the committee then go through all of that, come up with a list, and then, maybe we could talk with someone, maybe Dennis could help us again. Is there any of that that's of any value for a public sale? Somebody just says, "Hey, I want a piece of this." There may be some other miscellaneous items down there, that, some signs, or some whatever it may be, that somebody may say, "Hey, that's some nostalgic value of that," and-
Like wrenches up there.
Or wrenches, I mean, so, how about we do that? Get everything that's been requested, that we've approved, have the committee go in, make a list of what's left, and then have another, either bring it up at a meeting or a workshop, and hammer out how we're going to finally dispose them.
I love that a little bit, though. I just heard, and I didn't even know y'all were doing this, or I would have come out and helped. But it sounds like they need some help getting this stuff out. You know, we used to have a thing called Board Members Work Day. Might be time, might be time for us all to get out here and try to get that trailer unloaded. You can't do it trying to answer the phones and run back and forth, Luke, you know, and you guys-
Well, that's the reason for the committee-
I think-
To pull together what needs to be done, and then come back to us, and we can do that.
Yeah, if we need to, I think it might not hurt to try to dig out what's in there.
What we may have to do too, it'd be nice if we get a hold of Velocity. They've got that really nice-
I didn't know that was top down and that-
Forklift, I mean-
Is it an extendable boat?
Yes.
If you can borrow it, I can run it.
Bryn was great enough, he volunteered four or five hours that one afternoon, and he's got kind of a makeshift extender, a forklift extender that hooks on. And it helped, certainly, but I don't know that it's going to, it's not big enough and sturdy enough to be able to help move some of the really big stuff and that. So I'll reach out to-
Yeah, if you can get that forklift and we can borrow that, I mean, I've run one of those before, it's been a while, but I'm sure I could tip it over.
Alright, so committee, Sergeant Art Committee, if we can have you guys, since you know what's leaving, then with everything else that's down there, come up with a list for as to what's there. And if you want to, maybe even put a note on there, if you think it's scrap, or if you think it has some sale potential for a public sale, put that on, you know, beside the item and bring that back to the board.
Best guess, as far as what kind of metal it is, steel or aluminum, or just best guess?
Yeah, good idea.
Take a magnet, will you?
There was some discussion about using a platform down there that they part of with N S L, using it in the warehouse for storage. Because it, you're talking a heavy platform. Mezzanine type thing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we built that building with the capability of having a mezzanine level. And we just don't know if the steel, the part that went under the simulator, that that piece of flat floor, if you will, sits on. I don't know how difficult that would be to put in there, if it would be worth it or not. But anyway, come up with that list, how about that?
Yeah.
Board good with that?
Yeah.
Good with that plan?
And some of that metal might not be from this planet, it was NASA's. It could be worth a lot of money. Might be from Area 51.
Alright.
That's what they used to do.
Maybe we all need to get online too and look at NASA artifacts. There are some stuff out there for sale, so, we'll do that. Alright.
Price of the GNS, if you want to know how much it, they said it wasn't working when we picked it up.
About ten, eleven million?
Eleven million, twenty thousand dollars and six hundred and twenty-six dollars, I think.
What item was that?
The GNS.
The GNS, the, the front and aft.
Oh, oh, oh.
That whole structure and everything was just, just twenty thousand dollars over eleven million.
Well, if you can find the buyer that'll pay it, right?
Well, the fuel cell that's sitting down in the hangar, at one time, it had a card from NASA with a valuation on it of eleven million.
That's all that.
And it carries to the back of an F-150 truck.
It will fit.
It will fit.
Toward the truck all the way.
At some point in the conversation with Dennis up here, we did say, "Hey, you know, just how do you put a value on this?" And he says, "You really don't, it's really to each individual-"
Whatever the market will bear.
Yep, whatever somebody will say.
Their level of interest, you know.
Well, and those wrenches were unique.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, just like the wrenches you were talking about, we might put them on eBay or something and just give it a whirl, I mean-
Holy cow, you couldn't afford the shipping cost?
No.
They're really heavy.
Oh, they, yeah. I'll show you a picture later.
I've been down there with it, yeah.
Yeah, I, that probably, the largest one probably weighed in excess of fifty pounds, more than I would think.
Yeah, some guy wanted to man cave or something, who knows?
Alright, anything else on the NASA artifacts item? Woody, Noel, Maria, Kay?
I'll follow up with all that, and then we send that on up to the board.
Alright, the second item, it's time, believe it or not, for an audit. And Reddish and White has sent to us an engagement, a letter of engagement for their services. And so, we need to take action on that. We have continued to use Reddish and White because they are very, very familiar with our airport. They also do the city. And two years ago, we had gone out for bid, trying to find other CPA firms to do the audit. There's not a lot of firms out there that, well, in fact, nobody expressed any interest. So, we need a motion from the board to, for me to sign the letter of engagement with Reddish and White for them to do our audit this year.
So what's, well, give us the, give us an idea of what's in the letter. None of us have seen it.
This is just the-
I'm definitely not going to be able to read all of this by the time we want to get out of here.
It's just a-
The letter of engagement states is, it lists who they are, what their qualifications are, what their services are, with respect to the fact that we are part of a municipality. Then, they are capable of doing the audit for that as well. They go through internal controls, they follow government auditing standards, uniform administrative requirements, cost principles, audit requirements for federal awards, because we do receive federal awards through the FAA. Those items will be addressed. We will have, this year should be the last year, because we don't have any large projects coming up, a single audit in addition to the standard audit that's done. And that's because we exceed a certain threshold level of funds that we receive. They go through, again, this is just more verbiage, for audit requirements and standards that they list here, management regulations. Their fee for the services will not exceed thirteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars. That's eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars for the audit fee, plus five thousand for the single audit fee. If you remember, this year, they came back to us because they had basically underpriced what their services were, and we approved an extra two thousand dollars for them to finish their audit. This also involves, as they list in here, the anticipated cooperation that our staff will provide them. Maria, Lonnie, has pulled a lot of documents, DOT documents, FAA documents, invoices, et cetera, and provide that to them, so that's all part of it as well. They do state in here for future audit years, our fees will be limited to a three percent increase over the previous year's fee.
Is that what it was this year?
Yes.
Unless they make a mistake and need more money.
Uh, no, they're not going to do that this year. We told them that last year, when they came back with a two thousand dollar request.
What did we pay last year, total?
I don't remember the number.
I don't have that in person, if I can get that out to you.
That's alright.
Thirteen thousand.
Okay, thanks for the Reader Digest version. I mean, you asked us to reprove a letter and we don't even know what's in it, so-
She just sent it to us this morning and we're having issues getting it printed out, so I apologize. We can wait and assemble together another special meeting, so then you all have time to-
Basically, all it is, is a solicitation to continue to do business with us. It's a letter of engagement, right? Is that kind of a watered down version?
That's correct.
And since you said, I mean, and we do have, it's customary that we go out and get bids for what, any goods or services over what, twenty-five hundred? I think is the limit now. But since there are no other takers, they become the sole source. So, I'll make a motion that we accept the letter of engagement from Reddish and White and allow Mr. Kirkland to sign it.
Alright, any questions? Any other discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Alright, we'll sign that, get that back to Reddish and White. And you'll probably see Ms. Kara or Brad in here. And later in the year, next year, we'll be getting the completed audit for the board's review. And then that will go to the city council for their review as well, included with city's audit.
And just as a matter of statement, it would be nice if we could save that money, but aren't we required by law to acquire the services of a CPA? I mean, it's something we have to do, I guess we have no, and the city uses them as well. So that's also good, I think, because it meshes or whatever.
Lynn, are you all on a contract with Reddish and White?
Yeah.
Do you do a five-year contract, or? Do you recall?
I'm not entirely sure what the original contract was, we'll have to get a lot of the actual material.
Does that contract include a year that you would have a single audit, or multiple single audits to?
So, yes.
Okay, okay, interesting. Alright, for the record, that's all of the items that are on our agenda. So we'll consider our special meeting adjourned at 5:05. Thank you all for being here.
Well done.
And we do not have a regular board meeting. And we do not have a regular board meeting.